Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Jean Goss.
Present.
Mayor Protam Edward Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Rachel Erzmann-Dy.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Krebs.
Here.
And Councilmember Robert Parkhurst.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum this evening.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Tonight, Councilmember Erzmann-Dy will lead us in the prayer of the, pardon me, Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration.
Please stand. Hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, not necessarily inspiration, but hopefully encouragement and thank you and gratitude for those who have already voted, those who are planning on voting. We still have our polls open for a few more hours. But not also just voting, but informed voting and hopefully everyone did their homework. I know what we do in our family, my husband and I, we do sit there and with the sample ballots and reviewing and talking about values and why we may be voting or not voting for an issue. So, it was a very rainy morning and I haven't been outside now. I'm sure it's still raining, but this morning at the polling place, the power was out, but you still saw people lining up, making sure that their vote was counted and that their ballots were submitted. There were little hiccups because there was no power. There was a generator that was brought to the Episcopal Church. I don't know if it happened in other polling places. So, I think there was not the computer voting for a few hours. But again, there were other options provided, even closer polling places. So, hopefully everyone got out their vote and I was, my sticker fell off. So, I see all those that I voted already. But happy election day, everyone. And it will be an interesting day tomorrow to see results at all levels of our government.
Thank you. Okay, let's move forward with our meeting agenda. I'd like to see if there's a motion for approval or amendment.
Move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also like to get a motion for approval for reading resolutions and ordinances.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I don't see on our agenda, report out from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, could you please do that for us?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go a little bit out of order. So, the city council met in closed session to discuss public employee performance evaluation for the city manager Jose Reynoso. No reportable action was taken. The city council also met in closed session to discuss public employee performance evaluation for the city attorney. Again, no action was taken. And lastly, the city council met in closed session to discuss existing litigation, specifically the Susan Newhausen versus Laura Aguilar et al. case. In pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.1A3, the city council voted unanimously to approve the settlement agreement to resolve all claims in the Newhausen matter. And I have a short presentation that discusses the case and the main settlement terms. Next slide. Thank you. So, first, a summation of what the claim was. On August 26, 2022, petitioner Susan Newhausen filed her petition for writ of mandate challenging the following statement. With the recent change in state law, SB 9, a developer could build as many as 68 units with limited design approval by the city. This was a line that the city council had drafted. On August 31, 2022, petitioner filed her memorandum of points and authorities arguing that the above statement, quote, materially misleads voters by suggesting that Measure HR will result in large-scale 68-unit residential development by a developer without meaningful city review. Next slide. In its opposition brief, the city stated that the 68-unit figure establishes the gamut, informing voters that development at the city can range from zero units to whatever the legally permitted maximum density allows. In its opposition brief, the city acknowledged that the phrase "a developer" is imprecise. But whether the sentence is phrased as "a developer" or "developers" does not impact the underlying point that the legally permitted maximum development potential of the site is 68 units. And those are quotes taken directly from the respective opposition briefs. Now, on September 8, 2022, the court granted the petition for writ of mandate in part. So, it granted it as to the line "a developer." So, it states, apart from the falsity in referring to a single developer, the statement has not been shown by clear and convincing evidence to be misleading by referring to the maximum legally permissible development of the units on the property. So, that's again a quote directly from the court's judgment. So, as a result, the court proposed an amendment. So, whereas the section previously read, with the recent change in state law, SB 9, a developer could build as many as 68 units with limited design approval by the city, the court proposed that it be amended to read, with the recent change in state law, SB 9, as many as 68 units ultimately could be built with limited design approval by the city. Those, that single change is the full extent of the change in the entire argument. Next slide. As a result of this litigation, the city was required to pay as part of the settlement agreement $28,800 in attorney's fees and costs within 60 days of today. The city incurred its own legal fees and costs of $20,000 approximately. And in total, the city has incurred legal fees and costs of $48,819. And that concludes my open session reporting out.
Thank you, City Attorney. You're good, Sean. And now we turn our attention to the sets of minutes we have in front of us for September 13, 15, and October 25. They look fine to me. I'd like to have a motion for amendment or approval. Yes?
I made, I provided some non-substantive edits to the minute, to the September 13, September 15 minute.
Okay. And Madam City Clerk, you receive those?
Yes, we did, Mr. Mayor. We did, Councilmember Parkhurst.
Anyone else? Is there a motion for approval of the amended minutes?
Can we, I don't remember how we do this. Can we split out the 25th since I was unfortunately not present at that meeting?
I think you can vote on it.
I can vote on it?
Yeah. Since Councilmember Parkhurst was not present at the October 25 meeting, he's not able to vote on that, on the minutes for that meeting.
Okay. So, let's have a motion for that meeting first, and then we'll take the other two.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, those meeting minutes have been approved. Now, the next two, the motion for the next two as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Those two sets of meeting minutes have been approved. Good. Which brings us to mayor and city council reports. Who'd like to go first?
Let's have a quick update. I attended the Planning Commission meeting last week. There was actually not a large controversial issue on the agenda, so that was weird. But just a sort of a, you know, more run-of-the-mill, you know, review of a design permit. But I do have to say, I'd like to commend Assistant Planner Wolf, who has identified a very nuanced, not inconsistency, but maybe gap in our code and brought it up to the Planning Commission's attention. I will not attempt to explain it. That's how nuanced it is. But they had a robust discussion and I think we ultimately may see some recommendation or interpretation of the code around setbacks and pitches of roofs. So, just, you know, just an average, average night at the Planning Commission and with the planning staff. It was just very impressive, the level of detail in which our staff is considering our code and how to apply it. It was very impressive.
Who'd like to go next?
I'll go ahead and go. So, on, mine goes a little bit further back since I wasn't at the last meeting. I went to the Natural Resources Committee meeting in October, October 19. Some good news, the, we have solar power. Our solar panels were connected just the Thursday before the meeting. So, I think that was October 16 or so on that. So, that's really good. The commission continued to talk about the climate action list and refining that and bringing that forward. So, that was, it's good to see that coming together. We also learned that Analyst Carlson is applying to UC Berkeley for a mobility study for the city, which I think is exciting considering the attention we've had around e-bikes here. And that was the primary things out of the natural resources. There was also three Clean Power Alliance meetings. Nothing really to report out of that. Then we had the CERT training that was here at the end of October. I was able to go down and say hello to that. And I think we have 24 or so new CERT members, which I'd like to congratulate President of that, Pat Alcorn, for running a really successful session and getting those valuable members trained and able to support us in the community. And then finally, last Tuesday, I attended the City of Monrovia's city council meeting. Actually, I've done, I attended two Monrovia city council meetings because they've been considering joining the Clean Power Alliance. And they voted 5-0 on the 1st of November to join the Clean Power Alliance. We have another member within our ranks. There's actually three new members that they'll be joining as of January of next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's just provide a short report is just, especially considering this morning, I don't know how many folks were affected by the power outage. You know, there's a lot of frustration with a lot of residents, you know, it just is associated with rain. It rains and where you have a power outage. Edison has been responsive. You know, there's obviously, from our last presentation and understanding that a lot of work still needs to be done in our city and, you know, transformers that continue to blow. And it's one right outside of my house, lucky us. So, you know, I know there's patients that need to be involved, but we also are going to be asking Edison to still take a closer look and ensure that we're really reducing the amount of times this happens. We have a lot of folks that are working from home and understand that affects them in their daily lives. So, we'll continue to stay on it and I'll rely on our city manager to make sure that those relations stay, continue and that the expected responsive rate is going to continue to be right away.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Erzmann-Dy. I echo that. Just so the public knows, we are on top of it. We're listening. We're calling. And a lot of it is, we don't want a lot of redundancy because that's not efficient. So, we do a lot of it through the city manager's office. So, rest assured, we're on top of that. As far as the senior community commission meeting, that was canceled this month. So, there was no meeting. And briefly, and maybe you'll report out on this a little bit yourself, Mayor, but we, the mayor and I did attend a, I guess it was a ribbon cutting at Hal Dapper Memorial Field. There's a new infield there. It's a turf infield, still a dirt mound and dirt running paths and a grass outfield. But it was nice to see a lot of community members get together and raise funds for this. No cities, no city funds were used. And, you know, I'm just, I'm glad to see something like this happen because as we think about the fabric of Sierra Madre, it's really, it comes down to the people and the volunteerism that's here. And what's happening is that we're fostering this new group of volunteers. And I'm really excited by what I'm seeing. And hopefully that will carry forward through the next couple generations.
Thank you. Okay, well, a little more to report. Back on the 26th, I attended the sanitation, county sanitation district board meeting. Not a lot to report on, except it was interesting, you know, they have been monitoring in the affluent COVID, rates of COVID. And now they're starting to monitor rates of influenza. And back then, on October 26, they started to see an uptick in influenza. Nothing, nothing really big at the time, but obviously we've been reading and hearing in the news that influenza is back with us this year. So, maybe I'll know more in the next meeting next month. Wanted to just say the Halloween festivities were fantastic again. I think Halloween is back. Our city is back post-COVID. So many great things were going on on Halloween night. Kudos to community services for all your work, for the civic club, for their activities. For, don't forget the downtown merchants who really came through big time for the kids and all the participating families out on Allegria and our police department and all the volunteers helping them. It was just, the whole Halloween night was just fantastic. And yeah, I wanted to comment on what Mayor Protam said about the Pony League. It was really something. An turf infield is actually quite a, quite an expensive proposition, tens of thousands of dollars. And the families that are associated with Pony League, on their initiative, with the leadership of Edgar Garcia, the president and the E-Board, raised all the funds to put in that turf infield. And I can tell you that that's going to be a great benefit to the pony players who'll be playing there for many years to come. So, I was very, very pleased to see it, especially since I've had a son who played up there on the Pony League. It's special to me. And just wanted to reiterate that those were privately raised funds. We didn't use one penny of taxpayers' dollars to do that. So, good for them. A couple of quick announcements I've been asked to share. We do still have an expected vacancy on the Planning Commission. So, if you're interested, please contact the city clerk's office and find out how to apply for it. But we're certainly encouraging anybody who thinks you might be interested in something like that to apply. And from Public Works Director Semino, here's the latest on our rainfall this afternoon. So far, city yard measurement is at 2.35 inches of rain. So, yay, just today. So, yay, yay, yay. So, we'll take it, right? As long as we don't wash away in the process, we're fine. Okay, so that takes us to a public comment on non-agenda items. We'd like to limit your speech to three minutes if you can, please. And we prefer that you submit a yellow participation card to the city clerk before you come up.
Mr. Mayor, the first yellow card, speaker card is from Glenn Lampton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Mayor Protam, council members and staff, Glenn Lampton, 444 Sturtevant. First off, on behalf of myself and my family, I'd like to thank all of the council members, the outgoing ones. Thank you for all your hard work. It's a tough job and often very thankless, but thank you for what you've done. And you will be leaving unless you come back, of course. The city better, I think, than when you came. The reason really why I'm here is I just, I want to plead with the council and whoever the new council members are, please, we can't let the bear situation continue on the track it's been. You know, we have six schools here that have not been informed how to properly respond when they have a bear on campus. Besides just being locked down, there's reporting that needs to be done. It's not being done. They don't know who to call. In our own systems here, we have some flaws that California Fish and Wildlife are not being informed, house break-ins. And for whatever reason, I don't really care why, it's just it needs to be resolved. We've had, I just learned yesterday, we had one break-in all the way down on Benita, which is, you know, the bears are, they're becoming prolific and we need more than just what bear-proof containers. As you go forward on this, I hope you will, you're going to have to really thicken your skin because you're going to get a lot of public outcry. But I hope you'll take the position that public safety is a lot higher priority than public outcry. It's going to be unpopular, what has to be done. But the overbear population is going to have to be resolved, both on urbanized bears and overpopulation in the wild areas. Fish and wildlife has just, they failed in their policies and the execution of their policies, their mission statement. I hope if you have the time, you can go on page eight of the mountain, this week's Mountain View News, read. I wrote an article that outlines the 22 years of failure that they've had. And again, it's a shame that they've put you in the position that they have. But hopefully you can perhaps contact Portantino's office, Chris Holden's office, and possibly even create a coalition between some of the other foothill communities. They're experiencing many of the same issues we are. For some reason, in just three square miles, we've had more tax than any other city in the entire state. Tahoe gets all of the attention and we're getting nothing. And so, I just, please, please let's, let's not let this go on any farther. Thank you.
Thank you, former Mayor Lampton.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Veronica Bascos.
Good evening, everyone. All right, esteemed Mayor Goss, Mayor Protam Ed Garcia, and all the other council members, thank you for listening. And for everyone who's behind me and everyone on the tube that cares about Sierra Madre, I appreciate them all tuning in. I think, I'm president of the Sierra Madre Women's Club. I'm getting into my second year. And I'm here representing the club. As you know, we already announced that we have a $500,000 campaign raise to help us with our building, our clubhouse. There's a lot of issues. And I don't want to go into everything because I think everybody knows about it, but we have a foundation that's falling apart. We have unsafe, pretty unsafe conditions, in my opinion, to be working in the thrift shop. You know, you can't have the dodge and weave, you know, some of those pipes and things down there. And so, what I want to say here today is that in order to have a chance at raising that kind of money, the support needs to come from the city first. We are a community-based organization. We are 100% volunteers. We are a nonprofit. We've been there since day one of the city. And what this club has done, all the women have done, has been woven into the history of this city, 116 years. And, and so the reason is, our mission is obviously to educate, support, and unite our community while at the same time encouraging and inspiring all women in friendship and volunteerism, all women. Our club accepts all women regardless of where they work, where they live, where their kids go to school. Women need to have friendship. They need a purpose. And especially if they're in the retiree segment, they really need to have a purpose. Would you look at this club differently if it was your mother that came home to you with a smile on her face because she did a job well done at the thrift shop or, you know, made new friends, helped out with the Fourth of July committee and had lunch with friends after? Would it make a difference? So, absolutely. So, what I'm trying to say here is that, speaking on behalf of the 83 members that we have, that's 11 members more than the few months I was here, and it's growing. We have a pickleball team and that's, I'm glad to hear that the courts over here are going to be, I believe, changed from tennis to pickleball courts. So, that's exciting. And so, on behalf of the thrift shop volunteers who are always there almost five days a week, those clothes will get hung up by themselves. They get washed, they get pressed, they get, the shoes get cleaned and sanitized. All that's work. And just want to say our board covers the generations from 28-year-old to a 95-year-old. And we're working together to get things done. But we need to see support from the city. So, if there's funds to be divvied up, I'm just asking you to take a look at us, please. We need your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is David Gordon.
Three things. First, clarification of something in the minutes of the last meeting. I was talking about our financial position and whether we could raise our prices. And I said, we can't because of our labor costs and our overheads. In the minutes, this has come out as the Playhouse will be looking to the state to pay for its overheads. That's an illusion of a different thought, which is that we're looking to the state for a contribution for our capital campaign. Secondly, I didn't know the author was going to be here, but I wanted to raise the issue of bears. I found out from the article that north of Grandview is now regarded as bear territory. This is not news to me because I would be happy to show you my video of the 600-pound bear that took up residence in my garden a few weeks ago, soon after the visit of my young grandson. So, it's becoming a matter of great concern. Thirdly, I wanted to tell the world that our next production of the Playhouse is Patsy Cline in concert. And it opens on the day after Thanksgiving and ends just two days before Christmas. Tickets are selling very fast, I'm very glad to say. So, I would recommend to everybody here and all the millions of people who are watching on public television, that they should go online and get their tickets soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Mayor, there are no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Madam City Clerk, am I correct that there were no emails of public comment received either?
That is correct. There were no emails received for any item on tonight's agenda.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to a presentation of a donation to the Shepherd's Door by the Sierra Madre Police Officers Association.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? I am, I am, geez, I'm sorry.
It's been a long day.
Yes, it has, yes, it has. I am here on behalf of the department to present a donation to a local organization. We, in the month of October, typically have our breast cancer awareness program. Additionally, we have started to also do fundraising for domestic violence, which domestic violence is part of also the month of October. With that, we have, the department has put together a pink and purple patch. The pink represents the breast cancer awareness, the purple typically represents domestic violence awareness. And this year, we partnered with an organization called Shepherd's Door. Shepherd's Door was started in two, in the year 2000 by Ms. Linda O'Fray, who is in the back of the room there. They are a domestic violence resource center located in the city of Pasadena. Some of the services that they provide are domestic violence counseling, support groups, youth violence prevention, education, financial literacy, and different workshops. They work with the county of Los Angeles through the courts, and they also work with, primarily because they're located in the city of Pasadena, with the city of Pasadena. They offer through the courts, batter awareness and anger management courses, plus some other referral services for flu, clothing, medical services, and medical health, and they also do a 40-hour domestic violence counseling and advocacy program, training program. So we have, the funds that were raised from the sale of the patches are in front of you, are being given as a donation to this organization. So if we can have Ms... So during the month of October, we were able to raise $520, which we would like to give to Shepherd's Door to further their, to further their efforts in domestic violence awareness. Additionally, we are presenting them with a certificate of appreciation from the, from behalf of the, from behalf of the department. Let's step over here a little bit, so we can not have a podium in front.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. I'm so glad that we all made it through this rain and we did not melt, right? So I want to first thank the Sierra Madre Police Department. What a great opportunity, one, to partner with them in such a way and to be recognized for the work that we do. We are an organization that, been around for about 25 years. When I say domestic violence, I've seen and I've heard everything, I think I have seen and I've heard everything. And so one of the main problems that we are dealing with right now is homelessness and domestic violence. Huge problem. There's not enough shelters for how huge the problem is, and I'm sure you guys know that. And so we are always looking for ways and opportunities to help victims that come to us fleeing domestic violence, because most of the time when they come to us, they come to us without anything. And so very seldom we're able to get them into a shelter, because shelters are too full, or because of COVID now, they have changed a lot of the process. So sometimes it may take two, three to four days, and so we saw that there was a huge need to shelter these victims and keep them safe. So what we implemented in our organization was a emergency shelter program, and what we do is, we provide motel vouchers and we place them in a motel until we could find a shelter, available bed, available space. Now, sometimes that may take a day, sometimes it may take a week. But that's where a lot of the funds are going now, because we just don't have enough shelters for how big this problem is. And so I'm very grateful, I'm very grateful for the donation from Sierra Madre Police Department, and I'm very happy that they chose Shepherd's Door. I always like to say we're unique, and that's because we are unique. One thing is our doors don't ever close. It's just what it is, it's Shepherd's Door. And we are shepherds that guide and lead our sheep. And so that makes us a little different, not only that, but a lot of our clients are in our lives for the rest of our lives. And so we don't just find them shelter, we don't just put them in shelter, but we hold their hand until they're able to stand on their own. And so, as you know, with COVID, domestic violence was 100% increase in domestic violence. And so we have been extremely busy these last three, four years like we've never seen before. We don't know if it's because victims are starting to speak out more, we don't know if it's because of the climate that we're in, we don't know if it's because of all the stress that families are going through, but we see a 100% increase. And so we were always very excited and very grateful for any type of donation we get and any support we get. And so in behalf of Shepherd's Door, myself, I am the founder, I'm also the executive director, and my board and my staff and my volunteers, we all thank you guys. We very, very happy and very, very, I would have had an entourage behind me, but they let the rain scare them, you know? So I started getting these calls and they were like, "You know, Linda, I don't think I'm going to be able to make it," you know? And so I said, "That's okay." You know, one thing about me, I will ride by myself, it's okay, you know? So I thought, so they were like, "Take pictures," so, but I thank you guys so very much. If you have, I do have cards, so I'll leave some cards with the chief. If you know of any situations or, you know, we, that's what we're here for, you know? And we see any, any victim of domestic violence, whether it's male or female, it does not matter. You know, actually, we just enrolled a male, another male into our program, so domestic violence affects us all. It doesn't matter, it doesn't have a gender, it doesn't have a face, it doesn't have economical status, it cares nothing about who you are, you know? It doesn't care. And so we're open to help whoever needs that help, and so we appreciate you guys so very much. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you so much for what you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll just say one other thing, I'm excited, because we also got a call today from Sierra Madre Middle School. One of the things that we do is we go into the schools and we teach on healthy versus unhealthy relationships. So we got a call from Sierra Madre School, and we'll be going into the middle school to provide that work, those workshops. So I might stop by and say hello. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to our consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, could you please do the honors?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the city council this evening, there are three items for consideration on the consent calendar. The first item is consideration of Resolution 22-68, approving certain demands, and it is recommended that the city council approve Resolution 22-68, approving the payment of city warrants in the aggregate amount of $525,120.60, also Sierra Madre Library warrants in the aggregate amount of $2,034.36, and lastly, payroll transfer in the aggregate amount of $466,514.89 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. The second item for consideration is the treasurer's report with the quarter ending June 30, September 30, 2022, and it is recommended that the city council receive and file this report. Consent item C is the consideration of Resolution 22-67, modifying the part-time hourly wages in the city, in the city's classification plan and salary matrix. And it is recommended that the city council adopt Resolution 22-67, modifying the part-time hourly wages and wages in the city's classification plan and salary matrix for 2023, increasing the hourly rate to reflect the upcoming California minimum wage increase. Mr. Mayor, those are the three items for consideration this evening.
Thank you. So let's take these from the top, see if we have questions. Item A. Item B.
Yes. Sorry. And I know this is just the first quarter, but there are a couple of funds, specifically the County Prop A Park Development Fund and CDBG, they have beginning balances that are negative, there's no receipts or dispersments, and they continue to be negative. The one's rather large, $383,000, so if you could just explain what that fund is used for, and do we expect to get any Prop A funds to refill that coffer?
Good evening, council member and mayor. So the prop, the prop, county prop grant is for the Kirsten Court, so we have already given the claim and we're waiting on reimbursement for that one. For CDBG, we are waiting on reimbursement as well for the small business grants, and so those are the two that are negative.
So these are ones where we already, we've expended the money, but we were expecting reimbursements for what we spent for these items, and then it'll be made whole?
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you.
If I can just add on that, don't go too far. I heard that the Prop A, but I didn't hear the COPS State Grant, that one's been negative for a while. What's, can you tell me the status on that one?
The COPS?
The COPS, the State COPS Grant, that had about $50,000 negative, and then we spent $65,000 or $67,000, so we're now at $117,000 with a negative balance?
Yes, that one will be reimbursed from the general fund for added payroll costs in the COPS.
It's going to be reimbursed from the general fund? Okay.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not a, it's not a state fund then that we get?
We receive funding from the state, and we budget certain payroll costs in there, but sometimes if we go over on overtime, we adjust it at year-end.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions on B and item C? Okay, thank you. So I'll open this up for public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council and entertain a motion in approval.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to our first discussion item, our strategic plan update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I will be presenting tonight.
Mayor Potem has a brief comment before we begin.
Yeah, so just going back to the budget, and I know I, I've said this many, it's okay, it's okay, and, you know, we ask tough questions of the finance director, but we also want to make sure that there's props out to the finance director and our treasurer, Michael Mariro. Some of these things just go unnoticed, but way back when, I think when Treasurer Mariro came aboard, I know it's a little wonky, but, you know, the LEAF is a fund that we can invest our excess funds in and it doesn't earn very much. And we can invest in US Treasuries, and US Treasuries have been having very, very low returns, as you may or may not know, but that's, that's a thing of the past. And I just want to compare a couple of, a couple of the line items that we see, and I just want to give kudos to our finance team and our treasurer for doing this. You know, I'm looking at a four-year US Treasury, so it's locked up for four years unless we decide to sell, and you probably shouldn't sell when interest rates are going up, but we were, we were receiving 0.25%, or $2,500 a year on that million dollars. Fast forward to a September 22 investment of the same amount, a million dollars, and this, this is only a two-year Treasury, not a four-year Treasury, so a two-year Treasury, which is even shorter, more liquid, at 3.75% earning us, and let's compare, $2,500 on the million dollars relative to $37,500 per year, whereas that money would be earning just about a percent in the LEAF. So I just want to give kudos to our staff and our treasurer for thinking outside of the LEAF box and having a laddered investment, therefore we could have liquidity and we're earning money on our excess reserves. So I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you for indulging.
Glad you did.
And former council member Harabedian would be very excited to hear that.
Yes, he would.
That was his big issue.
Yes, he would. Yes, he would. Okay. Sorry, Mr. City Manager.
I'm sorry.
You're very patient, thank you.
Mayor, it's, it really is a pleasure to give council an update on the strategic plan process, it really has been a process. So I really, this is an overview of what I'm going to cover today. I want to talk about the reason why we decided to do a strategic plan, really what the strategic process has been, and then some strategic directions, and then some next steps moving We began this process early this year, and we really wanted to find, we wanted to make sure that the work that we were doing was in alignment with council, with city council goals, and we wanted to make sure that those goals were clear and that the organization was working to resolve those goals, and that we had a clear plan to meet those objectives. So the process started in May of this year, and initially, we started with interviews of city council and key members of staff, and it was five questions, similar to a SWOT analysis, we looked at what are the challenges, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, what we'd like to see come out of this, and what are some strategic goals that we want to set for the city. From there, city council and staff came together, we had a, we scheduled a strategic planning retreat, publicly noticed it, we met in the EOC, and city council and staff, using those questions from the interviews, laid the framework for really setting out our strategic objectives. We also looked at our mission statement, our vision statement, and we looked, took a look at our core values, and we refined those in that first meeting. Following that meeting, staff met several times, and then again on August 24, we met with our strategic planner, and we really dove into the objectives, and we started to lay a framework for some of the goals, some strategies, and some action plans to meet those goals. We also refined our mission, vision, and core values, and this is where the project, where the process took a little turn. Normally after this process, we'd bring the strategic plan back to city council, but what I decided to do was, it was important for me to have organizational buy-in, and I don't think this is something we've ever done before, but from that point, from September through October, each department had met with their departments, and we took feedback from each department, each department provided feedback, and that feedback was incorporated into, into the strategic plan that you see today. And that brings us to today, September 8, to give you the update, and the next step will be for us to work with the department heads at the department level to come up with, with strategies and action items to advance the strategic objectives that we came up with. Oh, I'm behind. Sorry, I'm falling on my computer. So that was the slide that I just covered, I apologize for that. So at the meeting, we looked at, we refined our current mission statement, and this is at the, at the June 13 meeting with city council and staff, and I'm going to read it because I feel like it's important for people to hear our mission statement. Provide exceptional public service that enhances the quality of life, honors the character of our community, and maintain fiscal and environmental sustainability. So we took this mission statement and again circulated it through our entire organization, 100 employees had an opportunity to review it. I actually sent it out in an email and I got some feedback from staff, and I met with staff, and we talked about, about the mission statement and what it means, and I was very pleased to see that we, we actually had a lot of discussion about our mission statement. And through, through input from our And through, through input from our organization, we refined it, and we really take that, the first couple of lines from the mission statement. And we talk about what it is that we do in Sierra Madre for our community. And, and I think that when we look at the proposed mission statement, is enhance the quality of life in Sierra Madre by providing exceptional public service. And when you go throughout our organization, 100 employees, I think it's very simple when we do our onboarding, and we're, and we bring people aboard to, to, to share the idea that what we do is we make, we make people's life better by providing exceptional service. That's what we do at our core. We want to make our residents' life better by giving them great service. It's easy to remember, and I feel like everybody in our organization can buy into that and, and repeat that at, at any time, as opposed to a mission statement that has a lot of complexity and moving parts. This just simplifies it, and it really, really resonates at what we do. We also looked at our current vision statement, and again, our all-American city will remain a thriving, engaged community that honors its past, lives in the present, and plans for the future. And we look at some of the work that we've done, and again, circulating this through the entire organization, and with a lot of feedback. We came back with Sierra Madre will be a thriving, engaged community balancing history and tradition with a progressive and innovative future. And when I, when I look at these two, to me, it tells me, it tells me what we do and who we are. And so, you know, council, if, you're welcome to provide feedback, but these are the, the proposed amended mission and vision statements with, with input from, from within the organization, entire organization. We also took a look at our core values. Our core values were, in our, in our strategic planning meeting, I think we had about 10 different core values. We, we took those core values again, and through the process of circulating that and, and meeting with the members of our, of our organization, we refined them, and we reduced them to, to these five. And I think that, I mean, we can take the first one, for example, accountability. We talk about individual accountability, we talk about department-level accountability, for example, fiscal accountability. And then we talk about organizational accountability. So, so the thing is that each one of these transcends the organization from the employee all the way to the top of the organization. And number five, again, was, was one that was born from this process. We've just gone through a global pandemic. A lot of people, at the beginning, were losing their jobs, losing health care. At a time when, when health care was at a premium, we decided as an organization that we were gonna tighten our belts, and we were gonna find a way to keep everybody employed so everybody had access to, to health care. We looked at our businesses that were struggling, and we created the CARES Act. We found ways to keep our, our seniors fed, and found, you know, found ways to, to keep that meal program. So again, the idea of compassion as a core value was born from this, from this process of getting everybody in the organization involved. So at the June 13 meeting, we worked on, on developing our, our objectives. Traditionally, I think the first three are what cities typically focus on, and we look at infrastructure, I look at that as public works, public safety, and community services, and we changed it to community enrichment. And through the process, we, we determined that there was a couple of other areas that we wanted to focus our attention on, city council and staff, and that was environmental responsibility and organizational stability. Then we, we, we established some goals, or, or set some framework for some goals. We looked at, with infrastructure and growth management, one of the, the, the things that resonated from city council was looking at our infrastructure, and as we make improvements to make sure that we can fund those improvements and keep our infrastructure looking good so that it doesn't deteriorate. And then we looked at aligning our infrastructure with our needs, the needs for like a public library and expanding that, public safety. We looked at community enrichment, and, and again, community services, and the idea of, of making that more community enrichment to, to, to really identify what the needs of our community are, and provide a more collaborative culture to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community, to work with our Community Services Commission, our Senior Commission, and the community to find the programming that, that is really gonna help our community. On the environmental responsibility side, I think we are a leader. We need to continue to lead i- in, in this area, and I'm glad to see that that's a, a objective of, of our council. We're members of the Clean Power Alliance, we've done some incredible things in water. I think there's, there's still a lot of work to be done. And then with organizational stability, again, I'm glad that council and staff included that in our objectives, because there's a lot of work to be done, done there as well. So the next steps for us, over the next four months, we're gonna be working at the department level to, we really want to separate, separate what are routine, routine things that we do, and then identify the things that are gonna advance these core objectives. So we'll be working at the department level with each department to set, to establish strategies and action items. In the next four months or so, we'll develop that plan. We plan to bring that back to council. If council approves a plan, then we can publish it. Then from that point on, I envision that either every quarter, or maybe on a semi-annual basis, we'll be giving council an update. Again, the idea is to, to create, you know, goals based around the, the smart goal-setting principle of having specific, measurable, actionable goals that we can bring to council within a recent time. And I'm gonna back up the slide to here, and I'm happy to, to take questions and feedback. I, I really want to make sure that, that we hit the points that council wants us to work on, so that as we, as we finalize, as we move into the final steps of this process, that we bring back a, a product that, that's in agreement with council.
Let me, let me just, I think we're gonna ask questions, right? So, I think I'll hold off. I have more comments than I have questions. I'll see what my colleagues have to say here.
I, I do have comments, but I had a question, Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yes, please.
Um, maybe it's a comment. No, I'll wait, it's a comment.
I have questions, okay. So in the packet, we had the report from the McIntyre and Sinclair, or McIntyre Sinclair. And then we've got this strategic plan up here. It is, what's kind of the guiding document? Like what, what, what do you want us to be looking at more to provide feedback on?
So when we look at, at the objectives, is, is the things that, that we met with council, and, and those are, those have been set. And then the goals, the, the strategies and action items, those are the items that we'll be working with at the staff level over the next few months to bring back to council. So this is really just a high-level overview to give council an idea of, of where we're on, where we are in the process and what the next steps are. What I'd like council is, for tonight, is to, to make sure that the objectives are, that's exactly what, what we all agreed on, and that's what we're gonna be moving forward with. And then we can talk about, i- if we want to refine some of the goals. The strategies and the action items, that part is still, is still to be worked through with staff.
So, so this is what we should be looking at from the standpoint of the strategic plan? That this is kind of what it boils down to, and, and as I think what I just heard you say, is these are the objectives that we've got?
The bold on, on the left under the objectives is that's, those are the, the five objectives that council, the five priorities that council wanted, that we discussed to move forward.
What are the other three columns supposed to represent? Because it makes it look like, like my, my mind immediately goes to, the second column is goals, the third column is strategies, and the fourth column is action steps, but what I heard you say, that's not necessarily the case. So what are, what are we, are, are those just sub-points to the objectives? Help me understand kind of your, your thought process of putting that together.
Right. So when we look at, at objectives in those, those, those five points, infrastructure growth, public safety, community enrichment, environmental responsibility, organizational stability, those are the objectives that council and staff determine that we're gonna work together on. And so our goals, for example, in public safety, maintain a safe, a safe, secure community. So that's our goal. And then some loose strategies that we're developing, and again, the strategies and the action steps haven't been refined, that's, that's the next step in the process, is to develop our public safety. And how do we do that? By provide enhanced training. And I'll give you an example. In the last year, we, we joined the TRAP program with our officers, right? Those are the types of programs that, 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 that our organization doesn't have the capability to provide our officers. So we want to find ways that we can further develop our officers so they can better serve our community, and we're gonna be looking for programs and training that's gonna help develop our officers. So that's, those are the action steps. And that's, those are the items that are not yet developed.
And how do the goals here match with the goals that you have on like the last slide? Where, where you had the smart goal-setting? Because if you have the smart goal-setting here, you know, that, that these are, these are goals, but they're not smart goals, right? So how, can you explain to me kind of that difference? Because I'm trying to, trying to wrap my head around the, the difference between those two.
So I, so as we, as we work at the department head level, we're gonna, we're gonna find the, the strategies and the action items that, that meet the goals, and, and the idea is that those are gonna be specific, like, just, just the way it says there, specific, measurable, actionable, and, and time-bound.
Okay. It, and then in the memo, how much of the memo from McIntyre Sinclair are you using to guide it? Because I, I had thoughts on it, but it, that may not be helpful, because it, it may be that they don't know us that well. So when we're giving you feedback, do you, is that helpful, or is it more on what you've got here?
No, and, and the, you know, the, the report that was, was provided, I feel it needs refinement, and that's why, that's why I want to take it to the department head level to come up with those strategies and, and action items. That's one of the reasons why I just limited to just a few points, just to illustrate to council what the process is, because, because you're right. You know, we spent a few hours with them, but they don't understand our organization and our culture the way we do. And so that's a process that, that I'm confident that we'll be able to further refine at the department level.
So, so we'll see like a more detailed plan coming out of it that will kind of have chunks on it? Okay. Just two more, two small questions then. So are we in the, can't remember if it's the mission or the vision? In the vision. It says our all-American city. Are, are we an all-American city? I mean, that's, that's an official designation with an official process that goes through. Are we still an all-American city? And if, you know, can, can you talk a little bit about that process and kind of where we are in it?
You, you know, I'd like to see if Management Analyst Carlson can talk about the, the all-American city designation and how that works.
All right, thank you, City Manager Reyno. So yes, we are still an all-American city. You never relinquish that title.
Okay.
We were granted the title, or awarded the title in 2007.
Okay. Because I knew there was a process that we went through to do it. I didn't know if it had to be reauthorized, or if it's like, you know, you have a heavyweight title belt, and you always have the heavyweight title. So, okay.
Right.
Got it.
Can I, before you move, can I ask a follow-up on that?
Sure.
The way I, I guess, just based on your question, I wanted to make sure I understood, and maybe I don't. The, the way I understood the mission and vision statement presentation was that, for example, the vision statement that referenced our status as an all-American city, that was the prior, or, you know, current statement, and that, that the, the idea would be to, to shift to this proposed or revised version, correct?
And actually, the, the current vision statement, that is with our initial workshop with feedback from council and, and city staff. And the, the proposed is with feedback and input from the entire organization.
Got it. Thank you.
Then, then my, my last question. In the process document, the strategic plan process, we don't have a, a community feedback part of this. I can't remember if we discussed that at the, the strategic plan workshop. Kind of what's the thought of getting community feedback? Is it through council meetings? Is there anything else that's planned to, to, to happen with it? What's, what's the, the thought process on that?
So the, the reason we publicly noticed the meeting was with the hopes that we would have some public participation at that meeting. And like I said, typically, the process would be, we schedule the retreat. The retreat addresses, you know, all the, the needs, and then we bring that back to council. So I think that if, if, if council was interested, I, I mean, at, at the next council meeting, when we bring this back, we can definitely provide an opportunity for, for additional public input if that's something that council desires.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my, that, that, those are all my questions.
Any other questions? Okay, so I think we'll open this up for public comment, see if we can get any input.
I've done a lot of strategic planning, and have been a consultant on strategic planning, and I think strategic planning is a good thing. And I congratulate the council on embarking on this, on this process. I think one thing I would say at the beginning is it, it's somewhat insular in that in most strategic planning processes, you at an early stage do a kind of environmental scan, which involves talking to the constituencies and getting some feedback from them on what they think the issues the strategic plan should address are. The process here seems to have been council and staff doing that work, and I think that could lead to a certain narrowing of focus. The mission statement, for example, says provide exceptional services, provide excellence through exceptional services. But actually, the council can do a lot more besides providing exceptional services. It does provide exceptional services, a wonderful goal to do that. But I think that a mission statement could be a bit broader in terms of raising the quality of life in the community, not just through providing exceptional services, the other initiatives that the council could be involved in that also raise the quality of life. I think the vision statement is one of those vision statements where all the words are good words, and you put them together, and you're simply left a little bit obscure about what it actually means. So I think that needs, could do with some refinement. I think in terms of one of the goals, which is the quality of life one, the action item is very, again, very insular and limited. It is the community services should put on more programs. There's an awful lot more to the quality of life than the programs that the community services department puts on. I think that should be broader. And then finally, the, the sequence is ratified by council and then published. And surely, it should be other way around, publish it, get public review, and then for the council to ratify it. Otherwise, if the ratification is done first, what is the public role in commenting on something that has been ratified by council? So in summary, it's an excellent, excellent first step. It's very good to have a strategic plan. A lot of good work has been done, but I do think a little bit more public outreach and involvement is called for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Other poll comments, going once, twice? Okay, no more. So I'll bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, can you hop in?
Please.
And you know, I, I value what Mr. Gordon said in, in terms of, you know, is it a mission of what we are trying to do as a city, which is providing the services? But I take, I, I think there's value in, in that, and it could be broader. With that being said, just a couple of comments. In the proposed vision, I'm having, I'm getting stuck on will be a thriving, because to me, it means that we're not at this point. So if we're not, and that- So if we're not, and that's why I like the, the phrasing in the, in the current is will remain or will continue to be. But the way I'm reading the proposed vision statement is that we are not any of those things and that we will become it. I know it's semantics, but it, like, to me, that jumped out on the page. And then I just wanted to comment on, on the next steps. And, and again, I, I know many of us have gone through a lot of strategic plans for whatever organization and just encourage the staff to think about this as not just actions because you can take an action like have a meeting. But is really focusing on what the outcome is. What's the outcome of what you want to see out of that action? Again, semantics, but you're focusing on not just having a meeting. Again, is that examples, but what are you trying, what is the outcome you are trying to achieve with, with, which, with, with whatever those next steps are? So again, minor, minor, but Mr. Gordon's words did ring true for me when I was reading that mission statement. I don't know if that means totally revamping it, but it does read as if it's just the mission of us as a city. And if that's the case, it does read, it reads fine to provide the public service. But that's my little comment.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, the, when we, the semantics, I, I didn't think about that. Councilmember Matty, it's, it's important. When I, when I read the vision statement, I think about a vision statement. I think it's forward-looking, where are we headed? So the, having that in mind when I read will be, that's where, where I kind of bought in. But then hearing what you said, I, I can, I pick up on that. It's like, we're not there yet, which could be seen that way. So obviously, we'd want to avoid that. But, you know, that's, that's what the city does, you know? It's not, it's not the council, it's really the city and, and the employees. They're providing services, they're not creating goods. They're providing services. So I do like the fact that it's based on service and service to our, the people that live here in town is, is very important. Kind of building on the four-month process and what's going forward, I, I just like to recommend that there's a lot of collaboration. Because when we have collaboration amongst the organization, you get buy-in and ownership. You know, I don't want to try, a top, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, but a top-down approach would not be good. I think a very flat level buy-in is very important to get to the, to the meat of those, of those goals that are at the end. I know we're still working and refining those goals, or action steps, or whatever we're calling them, beyond the goals. So I think that's, that's very important to me, that staff is part of this and not just E-Team, I, I think, at all levels. And just one thing that's very, that's, that's dear to me, and I, you know, I think about this often. It's, it's in the McIntyre Sinclair memo. And I don't have my glasses on, but it has, it has to do with talking about our infrastructure. And, and I know it's not something you get a re-elected on. But I, you know, our pipes last 100 years. And we had a problem where all our pipes went bad at once, right? And I want to avoid that at all costs. And we're all, I say this all the time, we're all dead and buried. I want to set up this city for success in the future. So I want to make sure that we have some type of capital plan that looks not only one, two, five, 10 years in the future, but looks beyond that and thinks about the future of Sierra Madre beyond what we are today as far as replacing pipes or improving a public safety building or a library, et cetera. So everything doesn't just come down on, on one council like it seems like it has been for us, right? So that's, those are my comments. I know it's a work in progress. We're going to see things throughout the next few months, but at this point in time, those, those are my comments.
Your comments? Yes.
So one thing I, I think probably got folded in elsewhere, but it's, it's kind of a particular, a particular interest to me. And I mean, I think the last few months, you know, of, of events in this town have, have, you know, just further strengthened that the communication plan, and I, I believe it is in the, in the McIntyre Sinclair report. And so it's, like I said, it's probably just gotten folded in, you know, i- into a broader category. But I really do think that finding ways, creative ways to, to communicate with the city or with, with the residents in the city, you know, is, is of utmost importance. I mean, we're doing a lot, and I, and I understand that. And we, and we've taken many, many steps even since we, we met in, in June in terms of, you know, engagement on social media and, and trying to push out everything, you know, all the information in all the channels that we can. But, you know, given the unique makeup of our city and, you know, the, the number of people who are not engaged in, in ways that others are, I, I really think that the communication aspect really needs to be highlighted in, in some way because I do think that we could do all of this stuff. But if no one knows we're doing it and no one can, you know, know that they can take advantage of all of these services and all of these benefits, it's not going to matter. And I do think that, that's something that we all struggle with. You know, effective communication and, and communication to everyone and not just the people who are, you know, here and watching online and, you know, are engaged, because that's probably the least of our concerns. They are informed. But I really do worry about the, the probably vast majority of the folks who live in the city that are not sort of getting the, the communication that they need to understand what, you know, what, what we're offering and all of the great services and programs that we are offering.
Councilmember Parkhurst?
So Mayor Protem mentioned one of the things that I didn't notice as well. In the McIntyre report, it, it didn't mention our pipes. And that's definitely something that has been a huge attention. And, and I think we, you know, I, I completely agree with his sentiments that, that we need to be thinking forward. To be honest, I, so first, there's a lot of great thought went in this. I, I applaud you for getting all levels of staff in to get them their buy-in. I think that's really good. You know, the, the slide here, this one I, I'm struggling a lot with because it just, it doesn't, the strategies don't really jump out at me. Like the strategies, it, it, this seems watered down. It, it doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem to represent what we're really going to be doing. I'm going to pick on the environmental ones as a shock to everybody here. You know, it, we've got a goal to be a regional leader, and, and I'm not, I'm not sure what, what that really means. Like, you know, what does it mean to be a regional leader? And so we've got this area of goals, and then we've got the SMART goals. And I, and, and I'm, I'm just really struggling kind of how to bring those together. I think this is a really important process, and I really want to make sure we, we do it well. And so this seems like this is, this is falling short of what I, I expected to see in a strategic plan and in strategic plans that, that I've seen.
So, so again, this was intended to be more a high-level overview of where we are in the process. Really, the objectives are the ones that we've set. Goals, specifically strategies and action items are really what we're going to be working on moving forward.
I, I'm glad to hear that, yeah. Because, because that's, that's the part where, there's some good ideas here, there's some good, there's some, some good parts of it. So I, I look forward to seeing it more detailed. I, I do think some level of public outreach, like I, I, I'm, I'm struggling because between getting this done, because I'd like to see it done because we've been working on it for five months now, and getting public comments on it or get public feedback, it, it's, I think we've got to do something to make sure we've got the community that we are identifying those things. And then I, I'd be remiss without making the final comment. So that under strategies, encourage greenhouse gas reductions, that, that, that's not going to cut it. Two weeks, two weeks ago tomorrow, the UN published a report saying that we are on track for a three-degree Celsius increase. We need to be half that if we're not going to have wildfires, heat emergencies, power outages, all of that. So encouraging it, that just, that, you know, we need to, basically, what, what, what the science tells us is we have to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions 50% in the next eight years. So that, to me, we need, like, and we're doing a good job on it, and we're headed the right way. We're 100% renewable. There's a lot of interest in, in EV charging. We've got the solar array. Like, I, I think we're doing the right, the right direction on it. But I want the strategic plan to reflect that one in, in particular.
I like, I like what I've heard from everyone here. My only, I don't really have anything new to share. I, I do agree with Councilmember Parkhurst that some public, some, somewhere along the line, maybe soon, the public ought to be acquainted with this and given an opportunity to give feedback on it. I don't know if that would be online, if it would be kiosks downtown, or if it'd be at public events. I'm maybe right here at council, I'm not sure. I don't know if you get a lot of, a lot of engagement, but I think it's worth a shot because I think we, we all have this view of this because we are conversant in it and we have a sense of what we are trying to accomplish. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. But that doesn't mean we're necessarily representative of all the constituents and all the particular views. So any, any way we can integrate some public feedback into this, I think, would be helpful. And I don't, I'm not going to quibble with the, where I think some of the criticism or questions were perfectly fair. But I, you know, the first, the mission statement is interpretive. You can, you can read that many different ways. I don't think you're going to be able to improve on that. Any, any mission statement can be read many different ways unless you make it so, so specific that it has no real meaning. And you want it to have a broad kind of context. So I don't have a real issue with most of the wording. The will be part of the proposed vision statement? Yeah, we could re, rewrite the sentence since, so it says we are and we're trying to maintain it, something like that. But, but I think that's kind of just quibbling. One, one question, I, I guess I wonder, should have asked the question when I had an opportunity, I forgot. The manager, the consultant that we use, I remember him, he was really a real sharp guy. What, did he, did he have any thoughts on public? Because, because he came in and used a model that he's used for many other cities. So it's like, not like we are really reinventing the wheel. This process was something that was just, you know, here it is. And I'm just thinking that, is that something that's typical, that, that there's no public kind of comment?
Mayor, in, in the strategic plans that I've been involved with, it's always been in that meeting where it's, it's a, we, we publicly notice it.
So that was it?
That's typically when, because following that meeting, the, the strategic plan is prepared and then brought to council. And this process is, is a little bit longer because again, we're involving the entire organization. But typically, that's the point where it's a public meeting and, and we, we take public input.
So I recall doing these in the past, and I remember we had a couple, a couple of our people here tonight would attend them, but it was fairly sparsely attended. So I don't know if that's adequate, really, honestly, to, to expect adequate feedback from that initial meeting. I think maybe we ought to think about expanding that somehow. Any other thoughts on this? I think we're just kind of giving you direction, right?
I think your comment goes back to Councilmember Creep's communication comment.
Yeah, oh, no doubt about it. No doubt about it.
Because it was public notice, and I, I was surprised that a couple of the residents that are sitting here today weren't at that.
I think it's the only meeting they've missed in the last 20 years. Okay. So we will, so what is the, can you just give us a, an idea of what, what the next steps are? And what, what's the timeline on this?
I think that what I'd like to do is bring this back to the E-Team and we can talk about how we can do some public outreach. Maybe put it online, maybe have a strategic planning workshop where we can invite public into, not in a council setting, but maybe with staff to provide feedback. So we're going to explore some options. And then we'll take that feedback and, and again, we'll work at the department head level to, to put all that together. And again, in about four months or so, we'll bring, we'll bring those findings back to council with a more refined strategic plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we can move on to the last agenda item, another discussion. I want to get my glasses out here. Recommendation to approve plans and specifications for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Street Improvement Project. Director Semino is with us again. Greetings.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight is kind of extraordinary that I'm bringing this to, to council before we go to bid. Usually, I bring it to when we are awarding the bid. But I felt that this project needed some attention for your input or your information before I went to bid for the project. I'll make this brief because we do have a busy night tonight, watching television, I'm sure. Tonight, I'm bringing you the information for the 2223 Street Improvement Project Plans and Specifications or Approval for Staff to See Bids. This year's street project is following last year's water main installation on Meramonte North Mountain Trail and Sturdivan Drive. On Mountain Trail and Meramonte, we installed two 12-inch water mains connecting those lines onto Meramonte, disrupting that street with the trenching pretty substantially, the which made these streets become a priority for resurfacing this year. Sturdivan Drive has two important issues that need to be addressed in this project. The first is the sidewalks. Sidewalks are very difficult to navigate if you have a stroller, wheelchair, or even just difficulty walking. They're very old sidewalks, and they, and they weren't built to today's standards in any way. Most of the driver approaches don't meet our standards. They have raised lifts from one inch to four inch along the sidewalk. And then the ramps at the, or the curbs at each street do not have any ramps at, at this time. The plans call for the sidewalks and driver approaches to be replaced to meet ADA standards and, and allow access for everyone to, to enjoy the sidewalks. The next item is, is the one, the big one, speed bumps that were temporary speed bumps installed on Sturdivan Drive back in 2017. Sturdivan Drive has, or is one of two entrances and exits from the canyon, from the lower canyon. Canyon streets are all 15 miles an hour. Once you hit Sturdivan Drive, it's a 25 mile an hour street. Speeds really pick up after they come through that turn going towards Mountain Trail. Past speed analysis show that there's excessive 40 mile an hours on that street at some times. The average speed, however, was 20 to 30 miles an hour. However, with the narrowness of that street, cars, and cars parked on the north side of the street, 25 miles an hour, when you're taking your trash cans out, does feel like a really fast street. Sturdivan Drive averages 30 feet in width. You have five feet for sidewalk, eight feet for a parking lane. That leaves 17 feet for two traffic lanes, which is very narrow. During the traffic study, we also found that the vehicles traveling eastbound towards the canyon also pick up speed coming on the downhill from Mountain Trail towards the, the Hairpin Turn. Staff installed temporary speed bumps in 2017. These speed bumps were designed for light traffic, like in a parking lot, the temporary speed bumps. They did serve the purpose that we intended them for. The traffic slowed to 15 miles an hour before and after the speed bumps. And the residents were very happy with the outcome of our temporary study. During the water main installation, our contractor had to remove a section of, of both speed bumps for the trenching of the project. And they were damaged and not reusable for reinstallation. Staff had the engineer while designing the street project give us some suggestions for traffic calming devices for Sturdivan since we, it's a known area of concern from our, or past traffic study. Their suggestion was to install a traffic hump to replace the existing bumps. I'll explain the difference and show you the difference on our plans. There are very few streets that meet these conditions where speed humps would be suggested. The streets in the canyon already are 15 mile an hour speed limit. And then their speed, and that's what, speed humps slow traffic too, is 15 miles an hour. Most of these streets are short in length, and they don't lend to high speeds. Or they're very curvy and vehicles travel slowly throughout the canyon area in a, generally. As for our flatland streets, there are very few streets that would meet these conditions like Sturdivan with the, the narrowness of the streets. And then if we did, we could evaluate other streets as they become concerns, but at this time, we wouldn't see any streets that would meet these standards. Now I'd like to show you the proposed plans for our street project. On this slide, we see the, the extent of the project. It's really from the, the driveway of the Meramonte Reservoir on East Meramonte. Oh, thanks, James. Oh, thanks, James. Down Mountain Trail, so it'd be the intersection of Mountain Trail and Meramonte. Down Mountain Trail, just past Sturdivant Drive, about 20 feet. And then Sturdivant Drive all the way to, uh, to Woodland Avenue and Glenn's House. Yeah, and James's house, as a matter of fact. I have two residents here. Um, this is, um, part of the plans. It shows that, uh, the gray area is the street itself. We're going to grind and cap the whole street, um, all the way across, not just the trench repair, um, which helps us around that, the turn of, um, Mountain Trail and Meramonte. Um, on this, we have some sidewalk sections, um, that are showing of, or R and R, um, and a drive approach there on the left side, um, that, that is damaged and, and needing a replacement. Down Mountain Trail, there's sidewalks, there's, um, the handicap, um, ADA ramps, uh, at each corner will be replaced and redesigned. And I'll show you some specifications on those. And then going, working our way down Sturdivant, you'll see that the, uh, at the top level, that's the sidewalk, um, cross gutters and drive approaches, uh, throughout that whole street, uh, will need to be replaced. Um, there's a couple there with the new homes that the drive approaches do meet standards and, and will be able to blend into those, but generally, most of them. Um, as you get to the Hairpin Turn, um, there is a, oh, 12, 15-foot rock wall, um, probably unreinforced, except the section there that, that fell in a rainstorm in the nineties. And we, we don't feel comfortable having our contractor do too much work on those sidewalks, uh, around some of that wall because that wall is a private wall. It isn't the city's wall. Uh, we don't want to, uh, cause any, any issue with that wall. So, we are just, uh, leaving that sidewalk as it is there. The section of sidewalk, I don't know if this one works, um, to your left, James. Yeah. The section right here, this is where the wall came down and they reinforced that wall when they replaced it. So, we, we will do that sidewalk there. Um, and then we'll get down to, uh, Woodland Drive where there'll be a new ADA ramp, uh, working onto the sidewalk right across from, from James's house there. And then, uh, the intersection of Woodland Drive will be, uh, the asphalt will be replaced. Uh, here's a cross-section of the street. We will be grinding an inch to an inch and a half of the existing, um, asphalt and replacing it with two inches of, of asphalt. That's what we call a grind and cap. Um, when you get to the gutters, uh, where there's a new gutter, uh, it'll be completely removed for a 24-inch section and replaced with a base asphalt and then capped when the rest of the street is capped there. So, on to the, um, the speed humps here. Um, if we go back, I'll show you. Here, um, is where the two speed humps are. They're in between Forest Lane and Pleasant Hill and then Pleasant Hill and the Hairpin Turn is where the two speed humps are. They'll, they'll be replaced in the exact same spot as the existing ones. They seem to have worked out. The, um, uh, any speed study shows that, that traffic has slowed to these, um, because of this. Um, so these, these, uh, speed humps will, I'm sorry, I keep pushing the wrong button. Um, they're 12 feet in length and they're three inches of rise. So, they'll rise up, level off, and then rise down. This gives a better, um, a better, um, traffic flow for mainly the fire trucks to drive over it because of their long span. Uh, it helps them out. It's not just the, the bump as a speed bump is. So, these are speed humps. So, there's two profiles, but they're, they're really hard to see. Uh, here's the profile that shows you the flatness of the hump. And then the other one is the, uh, when you come up to it, you'll see that it's, it looks like it's just a big, a bump. Um, these are some specifications for the ADA ramps. I wanted to show you that all of our corners in the city of Sierra Madre, because of our topography, because of, of the narrowness of some of the sidewalks and the, and some of our parkways are, are really large, they all, they all take different standards. They're, they're almost all different. If you walk around, you'll see some that are just flat, some that, that, uh, have to be built out. Um, and so, in that instance here, this is, uh, Mountain Trail and Sturdivant, um, where we are going to be building out that curb and gutter about 24 inches from existing in order to make that ramp meet the standards. The standards are that the, um, the yellow pad, uh, has to be no more than 2% of grade. And then leaving that grade, um, it's six to eight percent. Eight would be because we're going uphill sometimes. And then it has to level off again before it continues on the existing grade. So, in some instance, um, like on, this is the south corner of Sturdivant and, um, Mountain Trail where we're only going in one direction. This doesn't have a sidewalk on the south side of the street. So, we're only going in one direction here. Um, and then Meramonte and Mountain Trail, this would be the, uh, the ADA ramp there, which will fit in the existing. And then the others are, are just examples of sidewalks and, and drive approaches. Um, and then included in this design, uh, in the, the bid package, we're going to, um, do our removal and replacement of sidewalks from our Zone Three and our sidewalk program that, that we brought to you in the last council meeting. And Zone Three, I'm sorry, it's, it's kind of small. I thought I put big red dots on it as I blew it up, they were really big. Uh, you can see the red dots here, there's about 24 of them. And these are areas, uh, of sidewalk replacement. So, some of it could be just the five by five section, but some could be 20, 20 feet long. Um, this section here off of Grandview on, on Cannon here, this is a pretty long section. I think of about 40 feet of. And the replacement of sidewalk is the deteriorated sidewalk or the sidewalk that isn't, um, able to be saw cut by, by our, our other program. These are the, the removal and replacements. So, this, we, we determined it's in the vicinity of that project. It can be added to the project, uh, with the same contractor. So, it was pretty convenient, uh, this way. And next year, we'll try and plan the same thing for another phase of that sidewalk inspection that we had. Um, so, uh, staff recommends that the city council approve the plans and specifications, uh, bid package for advertising for bids of the 2223 Street Improvement Project and include the new sidewalk, traffic hump, sidewalks and traffic humps. Direct staff to advise, advertise the project for construction bids. Thank you for your time, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Great report, Director. Are there questions?
Sure. Honestly, Director Semino, I, I mean this with, with honesty. That was an engaging presentation on streets. I, I was, I was, I was, I mean it. I was, I was thoroughly engaged. That was great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, you answered part of my question. So, if we're thinking about humps and, so are there those rubberized bumps that are there now that are, that got damaged? There's only two?
Yes, there's only two.
So, these humps would, would reside where those bumps were?
Yes, they would replace those.
And as far as, um, emergency services? So, um, like you said, there's, I can contemplate three ways of getting in the lower canyon, but I think one of them kind of goes to the same street anyway. So, I guess it's really two. Our fire department and police are using, um, Sturdivant probably as a primary entrance. Um, there's been enough review on these humps that, um, we can still have good response times that won't damage our engines or, or anything like that?
Um, well, like I said, the, the humps are designed for the longer chassis, um, truck. I don't want to speak for the, the chiefs, um, I know they're not big fans. But I, I feel that, you know, the, the, the response time currently, it wouldn't extend that current response time. Um, I'm sure they're, they're both here and they're probably itching to come up and talk about some of them.
Yeah, I mean, that's my concern, uh, that we, we still have response, response times in the lower canyon. But we obviously want to balance the speeding there. Um, and it seems as though this, um, this remedy has worked, uh, through, since 2017, so.
Yeah, and, and ever since the contractor removed, um, some of the speed humps, I've been getting calls by the residents there. Um, and they're, they're concerned people are driving around to miss them.
I've seen it, yeah.
Um, so there's, there's people that are trying to pick up speed. And I, and I really felt if I did do the street, I'd put a new surface down and remove those, um, I think we would have a packed house tonight, which we don't have tonight, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I have a, I have a couple. So, the, the quote on this is somewhere just under a million, it's like eight hundred sixty, nine hundred thousand, is that, is that about right?
Yeah, the engineer's estimate, uh, including this, the sidewalk R and R is about eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, I think it came to.
And, and if we were to compare it, like, that, that seems like, my memory, and it, and it could be completely off, was that the, the, what we did on, on Mountain Trail and some of the other ones were less than this. Is, is that, is that an accurate observation? And is that just because this is so complicated?
Um, well, there is a lot of concrete in this, in this project, a lot, a lot more than there was on Grandview and Mountain Trail. Um, the, the inflation for concrete, which actually concrete at this time is a little scarce, um, so the engineer is, is really taking a conservative estimate when he does his estimate, uh, for this project. So, it, it could be less, um, depending on, you know, the contractor that bids.
Got it, got it. Um, the area up at Churchill where Meramonte and, well, where Churchill comes in and, and Meramonte makes the turn, um, there isn't a plan to put a sidewalk around that corner, is there? Cause, cause the sidewalk kind of, you know, it comes in right by Turtle Park, it ends, and then it kind of starts up just south of, uh, uh, of Churchill. I'm assuming that's going to stay as is and not going to have a sidewalk in that part. Probably because you've got the, the walk to, to somebody's house there at that corner. I just want to confirm that.
There is a 10-foot parkway there, um, but in order for us to do a sidewalk, we would do a substantial, uh, hillside excavation. We would probably have to do retaining walls and that sort of thing. So, we, we left that alone in this project.
And it, so, thinking of retaining wall, you, the retaining wall that you were talking about on Sturdivant is the one on the north side, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and that one's already kind of leaning, that one's kind of starting to, yeah, okay. Um, so, you, there, the, the, the two speed humps that you've got, the great value of having it electronically. Um, so, you've got one that, that is a hump and one that, that levels off. You were describing the one that, that levels off. And, and tell me again why it's the leveling off one than, than the hump?
Well, the, the hump is, uh, three foot wide and it raises three inches. So, what, what a car does on, goes on those, um, it's just a, it's just a quick bump over them. Uh, with the hump, you're actually raising your vehicle and then you're going back down. So, that, that's the difference with the hump.
Got it, got it. Um, then, then the last thing is more of a comment than, than a question. So, in, there's a, I, I assume you will update the, the, uh, the bid contract? Cause in Section 700-7, it has all the utilities contacts? And those seem like you've got, there's like, um, uh, um, some guy, Reynoso, that's in there as the utilities manager. There's another thing on there that it, um, it's Time Warner versus Spectrum. I mean, it's, it's small stuff. I just, I happened to catch it and wanted to, to mention it here. But that's really nitpicking.
Other comments, questions? Okay. I think we do.
It's just a minor one, but the way I envision the humps, don't they have, sounds crazy, little bumps on them like they're, it, it goes across and down, but then they, on top of it, they have the little bumps on those?
Um, it's not designed for those. What they'll have is the, um, stenciling on them as an arrow, uh, for each direction. Um, but it isn't designed for any dots that you would put on there. We, we could always look at that.
That's just what I'm thinking in my head, what it looks like, but.
It just adds, it adds more to the noise of the hump. I mean, they're already approaching it and slowing down. Sometimes those dots are used, um, like when you're leading up to a stop sign, that's, that's not a warranted, but a stop sign, that's kind of hard to see.
So, I have a follow-up to that. So, I, I'm, I'm guessing that we have certainty that we're not going to get less of a slowdown effect with these humps, right?
Yeah, that's.
Cause I mean, I just want to make sure that we're not losing that, that benefit that we now have with the hump, and that's right.
Yeah, that's the theory.
Okay. Oh, I think we've exhausted all our questions for you. Thank you, Director Semino. Like to see if there's public comment on this item. And I'm not seeing any, so I'll bring it back to council.
I would like Councilmember Arizmendi to phrase the motion in the Dr. Seuss style. We're ready, we're ready.
To provide, uh, I make the motion to, um, approve the plans and specifications for the fiscal year 2022/23 Street Improvement Project, um, that includes replacing the bumps with humps and direct staff, staff to seek construction bids.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Are there issue, uh, question, or, uh, items for future agendas?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, I think it was yesterday, or maybe it was the day before, we had a bear that was at, I want to say it was the middle school, right during pickup time. Um, I'd like to get a comprehensive report on, on bears and the situation. I'd like to get kind of a year-over-year, uh, any information on kind of where they are. I'd like to kind of dig deep into this, you know, per, uh, for Mayor Lambden's comments. I, I'm getting more and more concerned, especially when it ends up at pickup time. Um, I think we need to dig into this and really, um, elevate it, uh, and elevate the urgency of it.
I'd like to just add to that, when, if, when we agendize it, the sooner the better, hopefully January. Uh, and also like to make sure there's a thorough, uh, council discussion about some of the ideas that former Mayor Lambden has shared with us. For instance, developing a possible coalition with other cities. Uh, lobbying elected leaders, not just limited to our own, but maybe others.
And if I may expand on that, and maybe this is not a future gender item, agenda item, maybe a little bit of direction, and I don't want to step outside of what we're doing, but I, I think it's important and imperative to make certain that, um, we're, we're at least liaison with PUSD in making sure that we have a protocol in our schools, sooner rather than later. I think it's, it's too late to wait for an agenda, uh, issue. Um, we need to get on the horn with them and make, make sure that there is some type of protocol that's followed and understood instead of just made up at the time, uh, to keep our kids safe and, uh, the residents, uh, from, you know, other, other communities that come, come to these schools to make sure that when there is a bear on campus, A, it's taken care of in the right way, and B, it gets reported to Fish and Wildlife.
At private schools too.
I can, I can update you on that. Police Chief Amos is working with, uh, with the schools and we have had outreach both by our police department and by Fish and Wildlife, but we'll continue that process.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think having that Fish and Wildlife, actually, and the reporting as well? Cause we had that as an issue of, of the reporting that wasn't there. So, I think that needs to be in there.
Any other ideas for future agenda items? Hearing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So, move to.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Somewhat anxious, somewhat anxious.